I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Palm Springs Library Board of Trustees. Today is February the 28th and the time is 3:00 PM. So can we have roll call, please?
Sure.
Okay, Harry Cartwright may be absent. He's not here right now. David Kelly?
Here.
Ed McBride?
Here.
Kathy Wurman?
Present.
And we have a quorum.
Thank you.
The agenda, I'll just go on for you. The agenda was supposed to honor before February 21st.
Thank you. We've received the minutes. Are there any modifications to the minutes from anyone?
On item 11 legislative action, the comments from Michael Jackson and David Gray of Measure J Commission, they were asked by board members whether funds would be available for a new library, and they said that it was possible to get somewhere in the range of up to $12 million over a period of years. I think I'm correct in my memory on that.
I think I asked them 20 million.
Well, you could put in 20, but it was over a period.
I think.
It was over a period. They said yes, and that it wouldn't be all in one year, but it would be over a period of years, so. That was the only addition that I would have.
Okay, so that clocks wrong. The, so if, if we do that correction, would you like to entertain motions?
I'll make a motion to approve with that correction.
Okay. Any discussion on that? Yeah, I, I do think I asked for 20 million, and he said five years if I remember correctly.
I'll check the amendment.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any other corrections? Can I have a motion to accept the minutes as corrected?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right. Minutes are approved with that modification?
Okay.
Do we have any added starters for today? We have a pretty long agenda with some great information coming our way, but does, did we overlook something, or does anybody want to add a starter?
What is a starter?
Something that wasn't on the agenda that you want to bring up.
Oh, it's something that's on, that wasn't on the agenda that, that you want to bring up that is an urgent matter that must be addressed before the next meeting. So it can't just be anything. It has to be urgent and can't wait.
I, I don't have anything.
I do have, actually. I think what I would like to bring up is having a meeting in between this meeting, possibly in a week, on the strategic plan to discuss it in more, and the evaluation to discuss it in more specificity. And I don't think we can wait to the next meeting on that.
Great. As a matter of fact, I was going to make that suggestion when we get to the strategic plan, so should we, is that an official starter that we would need to include, or can we discuss it under strategic plan?
That's a good question. I think you have to agree to add, if you want to make that a special item or a, or a sub-number, like.
I'd like to make that a sub-number under strategic plan.
10C point one, would that be how it would work? Okay.
And then do you all have to agree for that?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Does there need to be a motion, or is it?
I think that was a motion, wasn't it?
I'm sorry, I just don't know the procedure.
Can you rephrase it in a motion, please?
My motion would be that we discuss both the substance and timing of a meeting to discuss the draft strategic plan and the, the evaluation that was done at a meeting, a special meeting, and the discussion should include what, who we want to invite and what we want to do.
Okay.
Okay.
And that would be 10C point one?
Yes.
All in favor?
Do you have a second?
Oh, I'm sorry, a second, excuse me. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we'll add that to the agenda as a starter.
And just as a reason, I don't think it should be just a subcommittee that discusses this.
Sure. It would be the full?
The full.
Full board.
Full board.
Any other starters that anyone can think of? Okay. Next item is public comment. You'll get your chance in a minute. As a matter of fact, treasures report.
Oh. Let's find that page. So, looking at the page that says City of Palm Springs Expenditure Status Report, page one, that's dated 2/12/19. Going to the available balance at the bottom of it, the total library endowment figure is reported as $2,047,386.55. And that is the extent of my report pending any discussion about the budget.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
I know, this is kind of sounding busy. I was looking at the interest that we're earning, and I was concerned that, because I've just done this with my HOA where we've invested our money in shorter-term layered CDs, using, and looked at Merrill and looked at Schwab as some alternatives, and the interest that we could earn even with very short CDs at three months is much greater than what we're currently getting. And I'm, I'm just concerned that, I know the city's investing the money, but I think we could have a better investment strategy. With interest rates going up a little bit, it's possible to have slightly better earnings. So I don't know if you've talked with the people in the city who invest our funds to see what they're doing currently, or whether we'd be better on our own.
I, I can just respond that the, the funds, the trust funds, the library trust funds are invested as part of the city's investment plan, and we, we don't have, at this point, we don't have a say over what is invested. It's just a, it's a complete package for the city, and they have an investment policy and an investment plan. So that might be something that you all would want to talk about. If you took it out of the city's funds, you would take it out of the city's protection and.
Funds are protected if you go with one of those. They never invest over $250,000 with any particular bank. They'll do a collection of banks, so you'll always have SCID protections.
Would it be useful to have the person who, at City Hall, who's responsible for those decisions, to make a presentation to us at some point?
You could request that. Or you could, could meet with, with the city's finance department and report back. It's your decision.
Would the other, well, right now we have a budget committee that could sit with the finance director if that is something that you could set up for us.
Sure, I can do that.
We can start there.
We could start there, and if it requires us to have a full meeting here, then.
I seem to recall that Linda, when she was treasurer, had a discussion with someone about the investment policy and could we do something about it. I just don't recall what she learned. And it could have been something she was working on before she left, but I know that she had the same concerns when she was treasurer, that she thought we should be getting a better return on our money. So I think that probably, let's start with the budget committee finding out what the options are, and bringing back what those options are.
Mm-hmm, okay.
And maybe invite them to come talk to us about it as well. Especially if we're looking ahead at a building program. I think the more interest we can get, the better investment, though, we, we need to be talking about that, so.
Yeah, currently, we could probably be double what we're earning and have no risk.
That concludes the treasurer's report.
We'll discuss budget under the budget committee? Okay, great. Thank you. See, that's your first one. That wasn't so bad, was it? Yeah, thank you. Report from the friends. Nancy, would you like to give us a report?
Well, the friends just had.
Come on up.
From the microphone.
Come on up.
The friends just completed the Jane Fonda Palm Springs Speaks. It was sold out of dent. It was very successful. This Sunday, we have the Rick Steves event. I don't have the actual numbers of what has been sold. Do you have that, Jeannie?
Over five, oh.
Over 500, about 540 tickets right now, and there are more for sale.
Right, and I see that we have a lot of it out on social media and different places, so hopefully we'll get more sales before Sunday. The friends are waiting to see what the strategic plan comes to us, and then we're going to discuss that at our next meeting, which is a week from Tuesday. And other than that, everything is pretty good.
How did modernism go for you guys?
Well, modernism went real well. We don't have the actual numbers. Jeannie might have them, or Julie, do one of you have them off the top of your head?
I don't know.
So you had one lecture that was totally sold out. You had two house tours. They're about 75, 80% sold out. And one lecture that was about 40% sold out. They've been making payments every month, so you've received the majority of your funds so far, and it's around $10,000. I don't remember the total exactly.
And the feedback's been very positive on that. And then we have our annual friends meeting, which there is no charge for. That's going to be the following Sunday on March 10th, and it's held to a maximum of 100 people because it's at a private home honoring Truman Capote, and that's sold out within probably 24 hours.
I'll be there.
Good.
That's very exciting.
We look forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One other question. One of the things, the last meeting for the friends, you actually had a special visitor, Lisa Middleton.
Right.
Do you want to talk a little bit about what she said?
Lisa just basically said that what she felt we needed to do was to actually get a plan in place of what the, what we envisioned the library to look like. So what, what is it we really want? And to go from there, basically, was the gist of her comments on it. She's a strong proponent of the library, and she's our liaison, and she just feels that we need to get together, and right now, we didn't really discuss it at the meeting because of the fact that right now we were concentrating on all of our modernism and Palm Springs Speaks, and after the 10th, the majority of our events are done, and then we're going to focus on the strategic plan and what, and discussing with Jeannie and Julie as well, what we envision the new library should entail. And there also is going to be discussion about whether we should partner with the foundation and have some, we're going to have discussion about that as well.
One other comment I wanted to add to the record was that one thing that she did say was that she wants the library to reflect the history, the architecture, good and bad aspects of our city and its history.
Right. This, the library is celebrating next year, the 100 year, and there's a lot of history with the library, and she would like to see that, that remain, that, that Palm Springs Library becomes iconic, is not just another library.
With your meeting, are members of the building committee welcome to attend that?
Our, our.
The trustees, our building committee, when you discuss the strategic plan.
Our meetings are always open. We have them on the second Tuesday of every month. The only time, sometimes afterwards, we go into a special session if we're going to vote on something, but otherwise, our public is totally welcome.
Yeah, excuse me for being brand-new and not knowing.
Right.
When you meet or where you meet.
Right. We meet at the Learning Center at the Palm Springs Vote Library, 2:00 on the second Tuesday of every month.
When we talk about the strategic plan, I think that you'll have some more information about that.
Right.
So it might make sense. So let's, don't go anywhere. I know you're not.
Okay.
And I think the visioning aspect will be a piece of the strategic plan, so I'm glad you're already thinking about it.
Right, right. I talked to Ed about it, and we may be going to meet ahead of time.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else, Nancy?
No.
Thank you, that was a great report.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I know you've been on the road, so thank you for getting here.
Nancy, are you the president?
Yes, I am.
Congratulations. So I'm, I really, I'm so brand-new, so excuse me for.
No, 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 thank you.
Report from the Library Foundation. I guess that will be my report. So the Library Foundation had a meeting at, actually, we are meeting at a new location now on the third Tuesday of each month is what we're trying to meet for, and we're meeting at the 500 Building at Sotheby's Real Estate Office, that's where David Sidley, who was our president, that's where he works. We had a meeting, and we actually had a guest who was very interested in what the library is doing. It's someone who is doing a personal reflection and reorganization of his assets and trying to decide future bequest, and the library is something he's interested in, so he was there to kind of see what the foundation is about, and I invited him to attend one of our trustee meetings as well. So he couldn't be here today, but he will be here at the next meeting. That was our first topic. The second topic was talking about the strategic planning process and the fact that we had such a wonderful attendance to that meeting, so we gave, we discussed that, and we'll, you'll hear more about that when we get to that item on the agenda. And then, as, as we all know, the foundation kind of went silent for a while. We feel like we now have reorganized back to a core group that has committed to being engaged. We have elected officers for now, and the discussion was centered around recruiting new board members. So David has asked all of the existing board members to recommend at least one person to be invited to the next trustee meeting to consider joining us, and primarily a focus on those people in the community that could be expected to work on a capital campaign program and would bring with them resources, if not funding, which would be ideal, to start rebuilding the foundation. So that was a great meeting. Of course, Jeannie was always, she's always there. She gave us an update on what's going on at the library, but I thought it was a really great discussion with a group that really loves the library and is committed to working. It was one of those discussions where we said, look, the time has come where if you're going to be here, you got to work. And everyone heard that, so I think that we have commitment now on that. So any questions for me on the foundation, or Jeannie? Did I miss anything? I think I, I just wrote the minutes because I, he asked me to, so I'm trying to reflect my minutes, but.
That was really good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great. Legislative action, library and trust fund budgets. Who's going to lead that discussion? David, are you going to lead that, or?
I'm going to lead that today.
Jeannie?
Okay. So the budget subcommittee of Ed McBride and David Kelly met with me, and we went over some proposed budgets. For me, it is, it is library budget time, like Girl Scout cookie time. It's library budget time. And so I presented to, to them our proposed library operating budget, and you should have that in your packet. It's the, the tiny print with red descriptors on the side. And the way we're doing this, we've been asked to do a two-year budget. And the way we're doing this, we've been asked to do a two-year budget so that we can anticipate costs, upcoming costs and increases over the next two years. So nothing... I'll just explain this to you at the top. The Personnel Services. I don't have... I don't have control over those numbers. Those numbers come to us from the Finance Department and Human Resources. So those numbers just stayed the same all the way across the entire budget spreadsheet. So the area that we focus on at the library is the Materials, Supplies and Services Department, those sections of the spreadsheet. So that's the bottom half of page one, all of page two, almost all of page three. And then at the bottom of page three, you'll see some special charges like insurance and facility maintenance services and benefits administration. And again, those are things that I don't have control over, the amounts. So those are given to me from the Finance Department. So again, those numbers are... There are no changes there. And then on the fourth page, we... Because we have two libraries, we have two account numbers. So we have our main library account number, and then we have an account set up at the Wellwood, Wellwood Murray Memorial Library. So we run that as a separate, almost separate department, if you will. And so that's page four of the spreadsheet. And what I... What I found in that account is that, and we've had this, we've got a little bit of a cushion in that account. And so I've found some resources that we'd like to purchase, and we'd like to do it now. And we have the money to do it without any increases, to add some new databases and streaming services. And we think that would be really beneficial to our community. So this is our library operating budget. Now, the next handout that you have...
Can I ask questions about that?
Yes. Yeah, we'll do that one first then.
Okay. There are a couple of things, and it comes somewhat out of the strategic plan, but and I think the budget comes at an awkward time because there are a lot of recommendations in the strategic plan and things that I heard. But things... Some enhancement of current services that I think might make sense to ask the city for, the tween program that was mentioned in the workshops that I attended there. The idea of a part-time literacy coordinator and the idea of extending some services to Sundays. And if we're going to be... And I know I'm throwing a wrench in this, but I'm thinking, how do we vision that to the city now that as we're looking for a new library, we also want to enhance our library? So that... I'm just going to throw that out. I know that it's kind of... But I do think... I do think we should be looking at asking the city for some things that are not bricks and mortars that would be part of an enhancement program. And the easiest one might be setting up the tween programs. But the other two, there was a very big push on literacy. And I know that that's a hardship on your staff if you don't have a coordinator.
That is true.
And so I'm just thinking that those are things that we ought to be thinking about doing now that would be helpful. And I think because we're getting... We can get support from the library, it's worth... It's worth an ask.
Can I just add something? As you were considering the answer to that question, I believe that you already had a meeting with David Reddy about the budget.
Yes, I did have one.
And it was presenting this to him.
Oh, and I didn't add a couple of things. Yes, so I did have a meeting already with David Reddy, the city manager. And then I have another meeting tomorrow. And two things that are on here are not on here. Well, one point, we don't put our capital requests in here. And like the commissioner said, really, capital goes... Most everything goes through Measure J, at least for consideration. And then I did ask for a couple of staff members. And those are not listed here in this spreadsheet either. But I asked for a... An administrative secretary to help administration at the library. And then I asked for a part-time passport employee to help us build some revenue. And that would be at the library assistant level. And I cannot find my strategic plan document. Do you have... Do I have a copy? Oh, thank you. Okay. So I understand what you're saying, Kathy, and I agree. And the tween enhancements, I think that there are opportunities there that we could seek funding from our Friends group. They're very interested in always helping us serve the children. There are... There might be opportunities where it wouldn't be that expensive, and we could include that in our current budgeting, where we wouldn't have to ask for extra dollars. But the part-time literacy coordinator and Sunday hours, I did do a cost analysis on Sunday hours, and it would cost the city roughly, I think it was over $200,000, like $250,000 a year, just to add four hours of Sundays. And we have our Sunday hours at Wellwood. We're open 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. there. So we had talked about that at some point. So that had come and gone as far as enhancing our services. So was that in the... I hate to sound silly, but...
Sunday hours, I don't think were in the strategic planning process.
Oh. Oh, okay. Not the working draft that we...
Correct.
Okay.
Team summer is in there. I think literacy is in here.
Okay.
Early childhood education. Connection between LGBTQ youth.
I mean, there are a number of things that are in there, and they all... And an administrative secretary could free up your key staff to do that. So I think that's...
Well, that would help us. That would help administration.
No, and that's important because it will give you the ability to deal with... I mean, not to have to do every little thing yourself.
Mm-hmm. Definitely.
When is the deadline for you to have everything final for your budget?
Tomorrow. So I have my meeting tomorrow. And I have all my documents ready to go. And we had... I already had my first meeting. So then the meeting we're talking about tomorrow is just strictly budget and staffing. So I'll mention this. And David Reddy does have the draft strategic plan.
I think maybe what you do is what you have. But talk to him about next year, that we're looking... Where... That we've got... We've got a goal of enhancing current library services. And it's going to be really important to do that as a piece of promoting a new library.
And some of these... Yes, exactly. You're absolutely right on that. Because some of those things, when you mention literacy, where would we put that? We don't have... We don't have meeting rooms. We don't have offices. We don't have space. So it... At this... That's what... If it's something that everyone really believes that we should be doing, then we need to, like you said, talk about the other half of that. Where are we going to put it?
Right. And I think that's... I think that's really important. But we're starting a process, and you know, what I'm saying is the budget is coming at a sad time to be in the middle of this. But I think we need to be looking then with David for next year so that he gets some warning that we're looking... We're looking at this as a piece of the specific plan.
Well, I would like for you, when you meet with him tomorrow, is to share that the trustees, he knows we're all working very hard to try to get the strategic plan in place and all the things that go along with it. So he's aware of that. And that we really would like to know, is there any room to give you some additional funding to implement any of these recommendations that have come from the community as early as next year? Because it only helps us show the community that we're moving forward with what we're talking about. Now, I know the city's not going to say, "Oh, we'll give you an amount of money, and you do what you want." I think you need to... And you don't have the time to go back and do justifications. I understand that. But talk to him about, you know, our concern is... Now, by the way, I think that we look to the trust fund. We look to the Friends, you know, for possible funding of some of those things to show that if we have to. But I don't want them to be the first place we go. I'd rather us have a conversation with the city of, "How could we do this?" And see what he has to say. What's his advice on how we handle that?
And I think we'd get support from Lisa and Kristi on it.
I think we could support probably from him, too. I mean, I think he knows that he wants to give you that, what people are asking for, right?
Right. And I'm looking at this, and I'm looking, when you mentioned literacy, we're talking about more... And we can talk about this more when we get to the strategic plan, but it really is more about partnerships and collaborating with other organizations rather than...
There was... There was a... It may not have come into this, but there was still a fairly... I heard a lot of concern about literacy for people who can't read and write as well.
But I don't know that it made it in this...
It might not have made it into the draft.
Because I think that there were solutions that are doable.
We're not done. It could come back. I think there's... I'm hearing from members of the community, they'd like to see that some program of some kind be in there. So I think if nothing else, you guys should be thinking about, what would that look like? And how much would it cost? If we're talking human resources, then I think we need to say it's human resources and space, right?
Sure.
Well, I'm serious. And then, you know, I think responding back to people who are asking about it, it gives us an idea of what it would cost. And then if we can make it happen, are you... You know, then we try to do it. But not sugarcoat is what I'm trying to say, I guess.
And if there's anything that's already in existence, like some of these programs that are computer-generated, whatever, applications that are kind of address some of those issues that could be highlighted as well.
But someone who can't read can't do a computer either. So I think that that's sort of the...
On a fundamental level, yes. But if there is some program that helps with literacy, you know, obviously, somebody who can't read at all is going to have problems with a computer. But if they have a grade level that's probably a lot lower than their age should indicate, then maybe those programs that are already in existence actually need to be publicized.
Right. There might be video instruction or something.
Well, you know, we've had this discussion now every year. And remember, we talked about, was it last year, we said... And by the way, you guys do an amazing job with the money you get. And I think that everyone in this facility knows that you don't ask for things unless you justify them and you deliver. I think that... And I think we're at a point in history where people think the library's amazing, and they're really excited about what the future holds for us. I think it's time to start saying, the city needs to start thinking about paying for some of these things that we are hearing from our community. And that's where I think that conversation with him on behalf of the trustees lets him know that it's time. We're going to be asking for money. We know that. You might as well start preparing him for that now.
And it's as important as potholes.
And, you know, remember what I say that... I can't remember. You guys have to look at the... We said, "Look at what we do with what we have now. Imagine what we could do if we got more."
I know. Yeah. That's... That was... That created... That helped us create that doing more with less.
Doing more with less.
Imagine what we could do if we had more.
But I think that you sat here right now and became resourceful already with what I could do with what I have now to meet some of these objectives. And I appreciate that.
Yeah.
But I want us to start thinking about more. And I think that that's hard for you guys because you haven't had that opportunity sometimes. But we're going to support you to the more.
Well, and the city's been in a... The city's been in a, you know, just trying to recover from the recession. And that's 11 years of recovery, and it's taken a long time to crawl out of that.
You have a groundswell of community support to help you try to get more.
Yeah, that's great.
Let's ride that puppy. Let's make it...
It's good. I have some ideas, too. I have another idea when we get to 10D. So we can talk about that. So then the next...
Kathy, is that okay with you?
Oh, I think that's perfect. I just wanted to bring it up. I didn't... Oh, you were just talking about David.
Hi.
We were just talking about you. You hurt us.
It's a good time to slip away.
We want some money. Come back.
I also have this spread...
Yes, trust fund.
...document to show you. And this is the time of year when you all get to help decide if you want to spend money out of the trust fund, and if so, what you would like to spend it on to help us supplement our income, our budget, and come up with some great ways to make the library a better place. So again, we met with the Subcommittee, Trustees McBride and Kelly, and came up with this idea. So if you two would like to add... Comment on this or talk about it? Or I can.
Well, maybe above the line, you should talk about these things because I think you need to refresh and educate us on why these things are above the line and why they're at that number.
Okay. So at the top, you'll see the trust fund balance of $2,047,386.55. Now, the next three items are the currently active projects that are happening right now. And every year, we have always had an authorization to spend some of the money on books, some of the trust fund money. And typically, the interest income that is earned has been dedicated towards books. And then some of that has been supplemented. And then we have a gift from the Croppitzer Trust. And their gift was... Had a designation that it was required to either be spent on a... It was about $220,000. It was either to be spent on a quiet study room for seniors or books in... Nonfiction books in English. And so since we didn't have a building project happening, we designated some of that money to come out every year for nonfiction books. And so those are active accounts right now, trust fund books. Wellwood Patio is an active project that you all had voted to set aside funding for. And then the strategic planning process, you had voted to pay for that. So those are just our active projects this year.
And just the $30,000, is that what's remaining?
Yes.
Or that's the money we're paying the consultants
That is what's...
to date for what... Does this include what we've paid them for? Or...
This is the remaining balance, I believe, of what we owe them.
Yes. So if, looking at your budget, your spreadsheet, it includes the amount of money that we've set aside, which is... It was $37,000 total that you... You had set aside $40,000. Let me start there. You'd set aside $40,000. Their proposal came in at $37,000. So since you had already set aside the 40, we just... We encumbered $37,000. And so there's an available balance of $3,000. Now, when the project's finished, any remaining funds will just go back into your future library projects account. So the current unspent amount in that account is $30,625. That's where that number came from.
And if I could add something here so that you guys know, historically, we would be looking at a spreadsheet that would sometimes drag projects just forever. And we voted last year that after, at the end of each fiscal year, if it has not been spent, it goes back into the trust fund. And if we have to vote on it again, we would. We'd review it because we just didn't want that money sitting there, knowing that we want to know how much we had at all times. So we have some projects that are now gone that we were caring for a while.
I don't know if I would describe it exactly that way. But if a project is still ongoing, the city rolls those funds over into the next fiscal year. But then once, like you said, once a project's closed, the funds just go back into your future library projects account. So kind of the same way.
And Wellwood is from last year, but it's rolled over to this year.
Correct.
Will probably be spent this year or next year.
And we've had that account open four or five years.
A long time.
Yes. It just keeps going.
And it stayed right there. We haven't given more. We haven't given less. So that's... That is the number. So that's, that is the number, everybody knows, right?
Right, and then the next items are some things that we brainstormed to come up with ideas. And a couple of these, I just want to mention, the CPLA membership is the California Public Library Advocates membership, and it would be ideal if you became a member because it's for library boards and friends and foundations and things like that. And so it's nice to, to show your support in that organization. And then there is a fund called Miscellaneous Office Supplies, and that would be if we wanted to actually charge you for, charge the trust fund for your, things like your nameplates and if there was anything that we needed to do that was simple like that. Obviously, we would get approval for that before doing it if we did charge you, but we just leave that account open so that if we ever needed to use it, we would just keep it.
Is there enough money in it?
Right now, there's, there's literally $125 in that account. So we would just authorize it, and then I would request to transfer funds into that account. So it just kind of keeps that account open.
Awareness campaign, talk to us about what that.
Now, this is part of the strategic plan proposal is to help, help us tell the community about what we already have. That's so wonderful, because I did the presentation at the strategic planning retreat about all the things we do, and I asked, raise your hand if you learned something. And I saw a sea of hands of people who learned something about what we already have. And so this would be a great opportunity for us to, and that's something we don't have. We don't really have, we have an advertising account, a budget, but we don't have a lot of money to spare on that. We do limited advertising for things like our Family Fund Fest and summer reading program and just some other things like that. And our friends do help us with some things too, but we think an awareness campaign would be a great investment to help.
It sounds, it sounds good. Does the city, the way they did for the district elections where they put a banner across the front of the city hall page when you go in and you will see what's currently at the library? It seems to me that there's, there are opportunities within the city as well for them to publicize what's going on at the library.
And we, we are part of that website, so our, our landing page for the library, we do have banners that scroll across the top. In fact, we taught them how to do that. It's our library figured it out. So we do have, our website is tied in with the city, and our events do show up in future events and then in the news category, right Julie? So there are things in there, and.
So an awareness campaign is something that Julie's going to be in charge of?
Sure, yeah. Well, that was something that we talked about in the strategic plan, and I think that's part of the, developing a little team. Right, right?
Go ahead, talk.
Thank you. So when Jeannie and I talked about this, we talked about, we don't want, the first time that we're going out to the public to be, hey, we need a new library, hey, we want some money, hey, you know, that kind of thing. So what we thought would take a step back and do this awareness campaign, so it's related to the strategic plan, but not entirely. So it, it is, it's sort of a precursor to the committee and to the, of just like, did you know at your library you can do this? Did you know, you know, or, or some sort of thing? And so, because there are so many things, as Jeannie was talking about, that people aren't necessarily aware that we offer at the library. So it really is just a strict awareness campaign of all the things that are available so that when next, we have this committee and we really go after what our next step will be in the strategic plan, that they'll already have been bought into, like, gosh, our library does so much, and we're so excited about all the things. Then when we approach them with whatever that communication's going to be, that there'll be a foundation.
So are you doing social media as well as?
Of course, yes, we do social media, we have Facebook, Twitter, Instagram.
So for this amount of money, $25,000, is there going to be some kind of a write-up, a proposal, something that's going to earmark what's going to be spent on what?
Absolutely, so if that was something that we decided that we wanted to do, we would go through and create a whole marketing campaign. We would, you know, when Jeannie and I talked, you know, it could be, it would probably be comprised of print, radio. I would love to do some bus advertising. So I, I did a similar thing for when we rolled out Career Online High School, so it'd be definitely all written out, what we would do, where we'd focus it, what our goals were, what we were trying to achieve, and so on.
And how much each thing costs.
Absolutely.
The, when I was doing the districts, and we went to an all Latino meeting of parents, they said, why don't people put it on the bus stops? That's what they read when they go to work every day. And I think if you, I'd really, really like to see you include that in the advertising.
Oh, yeah, that's.
We want to too. I tried to get that for Career Island High School, but we didn't have the budget at the time. But that's definitely something, for something like this, I think that is like one of our key targets, absolutely.
And when you put it up, they don't take it down very often.
It stays for a long time.
That's something, we saw Lisa's pictures for about two years after.
So you're asking the trustees to actually approve this budget before the plan is actually in place?
The way it would work is that we would approve this pending a proposal from them and us, we would vote on approving that. So we're just actually putting the money aside to say that we would like to have a proposal from the staff before we would approve it.
Yeah, you can do that, you can do this however you want. This was just a brainstorm of what do we think we need over the next year? So you know what, we need, we'd love to do an awareness campaign because the people who really do support us and went to that strategic plan retreat don't even know what we have. And we get, we get emails from, from people who are very closely related to the library and say, hey, we saw this at LA, you should get it, we have it. So it's kind of sad.
Because this brings up a question to me that's kind of, I don't know, it's so amorphous. How do you, as a director of the library, make a decision as to where to ask for these pots, you know, these, these projects? There's, you know, you've got the trustee, you've got the budget that you presented to David Reddy, you've got the friends, you eventually have this foundation. I imagine that maybe there's somewhere you're making decisions about this is appropriate for this group as opposed to that group. So could you let, let me know a little bit about how your decision-making and that process comes along?
Sure, well, I, having worked with all of the different groups, I, as an example, the Friends of the Library are, are very, and Nancy, correct me if I'm wrong, but the Friends are very supportive for children's programs. Like, they love to help with children's programs, and they love to help with purchasing tangible items that, that are visible, visual and visible in the library. As an example, they bought us new, new children's furniture, some soft comfortable chairs. They bought us some, some new bookcases for the children's room. So they support our summer reading every year, they help us buy books to give away for children. So that group really, they do a Born to Read program for early literacy. They sponsor the Career Online High School. So there's the literacy component, they're very strong in that. And I feel like those are the types that they, they don't like to sup, they kind of like to do the, the one-time gift. And so, so that's true.
Because now that you mention it, because you just mentioned that literacy is a big issue for them. So sometimes I feel, in this new role of mine, that sometimes that maybe as the trustees, we're stepping on somebody's toes by making decisions about things that some other group really wants to, to be involved with. And so, I mean, we could obviously provide direction in terms of something like literacy, but if, if the Friends are really the ones who are really financing that, and we're not exactly 100% knowledgeable, at least certainly I'm not about it, then I don't know what's, what's the value of our time in discussing it at this level.
So it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, but sometimes even the Friends might have even restrictive accounts you have to consult. Where people, they have received gifts that are for particular things, like we have. We have particular, set-asides that are strictly for certain things. So you keep that in mind when you're putting a request forward as well, right?
Yes.
But you look at your budget first to fund most things, and then you identify the sources based on what they might fund. Like, if you were wanting children's furniture last year, you went to the Friends because they said they would love to buy that, right?
Right.
You came to us for Willwood Patio.
Right, well, yeah, and you, you all do more bigger capital, capital-type projects. So you, you paid for the roof, you paid for the, the book sorting system. You helped supplement, you bought new furniture for the main room. Those are some big, big-ticket items.
LED sign.
The LED sign.
That's correct.
The sunshade. Some of those projects that would take too long to go through Measure J, you know, we'd, we'd still be waiting. So you had the funds, you approved it, those are bigger dollar items. Now, to answer your question, as the library board of trustees, you are, you are almost a governing board. You're more like an advisory board because of the city council and the relationship. So you, the Friends are supporters and boosters, and you are more of a, of a board, you're the board. So you can say, you know what, I don't know if literacies are the way we want to go. And, and then we, we take that under consideration.
Which is a policy decision, but it's also being driven by money.
Sure, yes, yes.
So, for example, I believe when I attended the last Friends of the Palm Springs Library meeting, at some point, there was a discussion about perhaps that there's a need for a banner. And they might be interested in doing a banner. I don't remember what the particular purpose of it was, but then at the same time, we're sitting here looking at a library board of trustees spending requests that includes a banner.
Yes, that's true.
So.
And please speak to that.
So the only better programs that have been done by the library were funded by the trustees. We've had two, one was generic for support of summer reading that was up for two months for summer reading. The other was during National Library Week. The banner that the Friends were discussing was for the Friends of the Library Week, that is at a different time. So they were discussing whether they should try to be like other organizations when they have specialty dates that, you know, makes sense, to do something aside from like National Library Week or Summer Reading, if they wanted to call out the Friends specifically. So that would be a separate thing that they would fund and that would get done and put up that would, you know, publicize its Friends of the Library Week and what that's about. So that's the discussion they were having, which is separate from just National Library Week or the summer reading, traditionally what you guys have sponsored in the past. Now, we did have those banners created, and they were used for several years in a row, but with our wins and things like that, they have now become unusable. So we haven't done them for at least a year. And so it was up for discussion last year, didn't make the cut. So I think that's why it's on the list for this year to consider again whether we wanted to have that visibility being downtown and things like that. So that's where, history, where that came from.
No, those are good questions.
I think all of the things that you have on here make sense. Your awareness campaign may be more than $25,000, especially once you get a sense of how much the bus stops cost.
Oh, they're expensive, we know.
The, the ones that I wanted to talk about were the capital campaign and the small meeting room construction. And I'm completely in favor of both those, I'm not. One of the things I thought is that, and I had heard, and I don't know if it's true Nancy, somebody at the Friends actually said that partitions might be something the Friends would like to sponsor. I don't know if that's true, it was a friend of mine on the Friends.
And I don't know if partitions would be what we would want, you know, with the sound, privacy.
Is that we have some kind of privacy construction. It, it's both in the specific plan, and we know that we need meeting rooms. Getting a architect in, us starting with being able to do it quickly, so we have somebody come in that does space planning, that can do some space planning with staff, using this money to get that started, and then going either to Measure J or going to the Friends with the actual proposal for the costs is kind of where I would go with this. And, and it's with, it isn't with that we shouldn't do it, and if we didn't have anybody else to support it, I think we should still do it. But it would be, let's, let's work on this as a start, getting somebody in to do that space planning, and let's really consider that a priority.
And that's why the number is a wild estimate. I have no idea how much it would cost. And I'm thinking simple, I'm not thinking glass pods, I'm thinking drywall, windows and doors, you know.
Or something that you can take with you. I'm kind of more thinking something you can take with you when the new library's built so that it's something you can, but that's just, they're different ideas and.
Sure, and I think that would be expensive.
And capital campaign on this, the answer is yes, $30,000 might not be enough. We do have, we have Measure J is holding money aside, but we want to get that started. And there will be a couple of things that we need to get started on the capital campaign. One is helping possibly the, my, my committee names, the foundation hire a fundraiser to assist them. The other piece, and there are some pieces that will come in the strategic plan, and I think the numbers need to be a little more flexible. It's the person who helps with the visioning, the, the going out to the community with the visioning. That would be a specific person. And also the person who looks at the potential, I'm thinking we probably have the existing site and maybe two other sites that we can look at. Somebody who takes the numbers, looks at those, and looks at what, some rough estimates of the cost. But that's something that maybe we get started and then go to our friends at Prop J or the Friends and say, can you help us with this? But we have the flexibility to start it so that we don't wait for three months or four months or six months to go through another body that has to say yes. And I'm assuming the Friends are more flexible than Prop J, but it's, you know, there's, there's clearly money set aside for it, but we've got to get it started. So those two items on this, I was very excited to see, want to thank the committee for. But just talk a little bit about how broadly I think we need to think about those, those line items.
So the process would be that we would approve.
Turn on your mic.
Oh, sorry. The process would be that we would approve this, this budget and request from staff and possibly even the committee of further fleshing out of, of these proposals to come back to us ASAP. By the way, the beauty of the trust fund is that unlike the city budget, if someone, if they come back and say, we really need $30,000 for an awareness campaign, we have that flexibility to approve that from the trust fund. So that's, that is the view of having these programs this way, so I, I agree.
And you're not tied to a fiscal year?
Correct, we can do it anytime.
You can do it now and then roll it later, keep it going?
I think that this list is showing also what we were discussing earlier Kathy, and the community that we're willing to use some of the funds that are available to us to implement some of the vision that people are starting to see and come up with. So I think it's very exciting.
And the only place is, we have the capital campaign, but you might want something for the visioning costing campaign, you know, those aspects of it. Seed money for that, so that it's more clearly articulated, that's something additionally that we might look at.
You might want to use the Measure J funds that are already there for that.
We know they're there, and I think we have to sit down with Measure J and say, these are things we want to do.
That might be what you should do.
So, yeah, I, I mean, I think we do want to use the Measure J funds, but I don't want to wait six months to be able to, to begin to engage somebody to do that work if we need it.
Could we, could we group the, the visioning part of that under the capital campaign part of that? And just say, let's start with $30,000 for now. We know that, that, that means more than just a capital campaign. It could be that that vision person's going to help us see what a capital campaign looks like, and we may need more money for that. But I think let's, let's group that there and further flesh these proposals out and be prepared based on the next report that we get on the strategic plan.
So the capital campaign should say capital campaign and visioning.
Yes.
And costing.
Yeah.
And costing.
Yeah, and thank you for the explanation of the banners. I mean, that makes sense that, because we, I remember now that we, we did kind of postpone those, so then it's time. Especially now, we want everyone to know about the library. So I think that it's time for us to, to get those out there.
And one other, no, one other point, that every time that somebody spends money out of a trust fund balance, I think it's a good point to kind of say what the trust fund's projected income is. And I don't know if we can show that on this page, but just to, I think as a prudent measure of, of how we're spending our money, if we can kind of see, you know, tighten, look to see how, no, because I, I don't think we as a, as a trust, board of trustees have ever said, this is what our minimum level of the trust is supposed to be. But to look at whatever income that we're supposed to be getting, whatever we get, it's a good reminder of like, how quickly we could replenish this, so to speak.
Okay, well, I, I...
I mean, from, from example, like in...
I hear what you're saying, I'm kind of, I just want to be, I just want some clarification or maybe I don't understand. Because the trust fund really, the only income that you get is interest income unless someone gives you a donation.
Right.
So, I don't know about that. But then on, on, you do get your reports every month of your finance, finances and how, and the spending for those, that period.
I, I think we should expect.
If I'm getting, if I understand.
I think we should expect that once we kick off a capital campaign, we may have people that instead of giving to the foundation, might want to give to the trust fund.
Sure.
They might see that as a preferable way to give money. So, that trust fund could in fact see some growth like it's never seen before. But I hear what you're saying. I think we need to know what our balance is at all times so that we can, you know, say, is, is $200,000 a year or something that we want to keep as a cap? Or do we want, I assume that's what you're saying.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Okay, and yeah, you have not, no one's really decided.
And I know here it says, you know, the title of this is Library Board of Trustees Spending Request. But, you know, usually when you're looking at spending requests, you're, you're thinking about what's the income that's coming in. Yes, and I understand right now that, that is, there's only really two sources of income, donations. And there are donations. I mean, we were talking about in your office the other day about donations that came in that were specifically set for the library. So...
And those are, we don't, it's hard to project.
We can't project those, but we can at least say that we're, we're thinking about the revenue that we have in here. Otherwise, we're just, we're looking at two, a $2 million blank check, right?
But can I say something? I think, I think though, you're on to something here. I think we could project this. If we as a board say, we, we will spend, I'm making it, $200,000 a year. We look to our foundation and say, we would like for you to have as a goal to replenish $250,000 of the trust fund every year in your fundraising efforts because we want the trust fund to stay... Yeah, I mean, we've never had that available to us. And that's what the, the foundation should be for, right? So, I think you're right on that we say that if we give some away, we want someone to come back in some way. So...
And right now...
And maybe that's not right in this particular document, sorry about that. But maybe it's not right for this particular document, but maybe in the, somewhere down the line when this, this budget is actually finalized, I suppose, as a presentation, you know, it could be a little bit more complete.
Yeah.
There are two things. If we, if I look at, assuming that the quarter I looked at in terms of interest income, we're probably about $36,000 a year in interest income max. And my guess is it's lower than that for the last year.
It's about $11,000 a year.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, and if we reinvest the money, we can, if we can work that through with the city so that we get a better return, we, that probably can get up to about $50,000 a year at current interest rates. But, but it's not that high. But I don't think we can do a capital campaign right now and, you know, basically do the strategic plan capital campaign without thinking we've got to do some of these things. And so, that's, it's being prudent. It would be imprudent not to spend any money to move it forward.
I agree.
And that's, that's...
I agree.
And that's not to throw money around. It's just that we need, we do want to create some momentum with this and we've got to help push it forward.
So, can we have a motion that we accept this budget pending proposals from staff and from the finance, the budget committee and move from there?
And maybe the building committee?
Yeah.
If we can help get somebody to do the space planning.
Can we, can we get a motion on that and then we, I think this is a good start on this.
I said moved.
He's second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Lisa, you got that right.
Good, it's a start.
No, it's great. Thank you.
Wellwood Patio Update.
I have one, which is that I talked to Marcus. Oh, you, you weren't at the meeting. What, what happened at the last meeting was there was a meeting with the, the HSPB and our liaisons and consul, Marcus. And essentially, the, what the HSPB wants is sort of what we will do. The city agreed that they would pay for the, any excess so that we would have no, no expenditure beyond the 147 that we'd previously agreed to. But that, the redesigns would mirror closer to what the HSPB had asked for in terms of pavement, seating, trees, blocking off the backspace. And I talked to Marcus just to ask him where we were at. And he said that it's going to City Council either on next Wednesday or two weeks from Wednesday. And it would be the, the enhanced costs of design. So, there's no design in front of us right now for it, just paying costs to redesign it in a way that is more acceptable to the historic community. And that when there is a design, it would obviously come back to us. The other agreement we got from Marcus at our meeting was that our funds would be the last funds in. So, that our funds would go into building and they would go into the last requests for invoices.
That's nice.
So, that, I think, is that, that's pretty fairly what we got at the meetings.
And this is, I don't know who Marcus is. Marcus here?
Oh, Marcus Fuller is the Assistant City Manager and used to be City Engineer and handles all the city contracting. So, there, the city's essentially chosen the architect who's going to do it. But the design would mirror less what the library asked for in the original design and more what the historic community felt was appropriate for the building.
I think we all came to consensus on most of it.
And, and I think that in that meeting, someone who's lived through this discussion now for a long time, I said for the record to Mr. Reddy and to our liaisons that the trustees, I, I spoke on behalf of us, we're fine if they want to spend more money on it, but our money is, has been identified. Our objections are lifted away. We really, before you guys, we really got into, well, we really don't want to do that because that's going to cost more money, assuming we'd have to pay for all of it. When, when that takes away, I think that we were quite welcoming to have it look more what the historical board would like. We think it's a wonderful idea. It's just that we didn't want to pay for it, to be perfectly honest. So, that's really good news. Am I reflecting that accurate discussion?
Well, that's great. Yeah, you gave great reports.
The, the historic board went back and forth on whether the trees should come out. The trees should come out or it should be changed, but they're coming out.
They are?
Yeah. That's, that's where they ended up.
I think it'll be beautiful.
It will be.
And as long as it's finished.
In our lifetime. I hope I get to see it.
We will request funds for a party.
But I'm getting older every day.
We'll have a party and I'll come to you and ask for funds.
The other thing that's important is that our funds come in last. So, their funds come in, they, they know that what they need is our dollars and...
That's the, I haven't heard that yet, but that's usually not how it works. It's usually our funds go out first.
No, I asked, I specifically asked Marcus in that meeting.
Okay.
I've done too much building to...
Well, maybe it's because it is trust fund money that makes sense to have it come in last. And we have other things we need to do with that money at some point.
We do. We've got some stuff to do.
It'd be nice if we didn't have to spend all of it, but I know that's not, that's wishful thinking. I won't go that far. Okay. Thank you for that report.
I have one other question. So, if I'm correct in hearing what you said in terms of the architects being city-based, the, the people who've actually done all this work to date, I'm assuming are the same people. So, the invoices that were generated by the prior people working on Wellwood, are those, is, what's the status of that? And, and are we ultimately going to have to pay for all of that work that was done?
So, you, I think you've already paid for the work that was done in the past. And that was David Volz. He's an architect of record with the city. So, the city has architects on call that they've already vetted and approved as ones that they can hire. And I, I didn't, Kathy, I didn't know the full project. I, I know that the project, it will go back to him and his organization to do the designs. And then I don't know if it goes out to bid at that point to someone else. So, a contractor or something.
It'll go out to bid to a contractor.
Yeah.
What they're taking through City Council is the extension of the architectural contract. And since it's in excess of 25,000, it has to go through as a council item.
Yes.
But David told us he would find money for the increased costs in the project.
Yeah, because the only question I had was that it, it didn't seem as if whatever was being paid for going forward was not something that was already paid for in the past.
Right, it was all, it's all going to be new fees.
New fees.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next item is the strategic plan update. And this is, this is really getting to be very exciting as someone who really wanted us to get to this point. I, I'm very happy to say that yesterday, I, right here. As of yesterday, the consultants have issued to us the last draft of the plan, which I'd like to share with each of you. What you have in this packet is an assessment report that was done, just so that you may see that, that went to staff. But the strategic plan is attached to the back of it. Because this document was not provided posting with our report.
Do you want me to hold on to that?
Sure. Today, what I wanted to do was to talk about the process going forward with how we work on the plan and what are the next steps. Just so that you know, when we started this process, I was asked by the trustees to approach the, then the president of the Friends and the president of the foundation and ask for their support, not necessarily to give us money, but to make sure that they were part of the process. I agreed based on what I was asked to do, to have their boards review this, at this point, the draft plan so that they may have input into the process before it is finalized and is presented back to staff, as this is the plan that we wish to, to approve. So, at this point, I, I am prepared to now email Nancy and David and say, here's the plan and we want to give you some structure around what we expect from you. And what the consultants have recommended for us, and by the way, we, we can do any way we wish, but to give time for review and feedback and then come back together either as this group or as a combined group to review those suggestions, take those back. And by the way, the consultant has agreed to not necessarily be sitting here, but be on the phone listening, making edit changes as we go through the process so that the final draft then comes to us for our review and acceptance at our next meeting. I'm aware, and I, so Jeannie, please correct me, that we would need to post this at least a week before the next meeting so that any public would know that we're going to vote on this and approve it, right?
Yes.
So, that if you look at the calendar, our next meeting should be on...
March 28.
March 28. One week from that would be the 21st, right, backing up, correct? So, we would need at least a week for that in order for the consultants to get it to us in the format that we would want, correct? So, I'm sorry, I forgot my calendar. Where, where does that put us then? That puts us about the 14th.
You probably need to get it out on the Thursday.
That puts me on vacation.
Do you get it out on the Monday before the Thursday or the Thursday before the Thursday?
We put, we post the budget the Thursday before.
So, looking at the calendar, if I send this out to, and I will tonight, to Nancy and David, we would give them how long to, well, Nancy's meeting, you're on the 10th, right?
Well.
12th. So, would you be able to share with your board before then so that they can start?
As soon as I get it, I'm going to email it.
Okay, and I know that David will too. So, we could say, we need that to come back. And if we have a special meeting, when would, when will, will we have to announce that special meeting as well?
Oh, yes, yes. We have to post it. It, special meetings don't require such a long posting time. I think it's 72 hours. So, it's not an emergency special meeting. It's just a special meeting. But I have, I have a lot of scheduling issues. I'm going out of town. I'm going out of state. But does, we can, if you, you're talking about maybe scheduling a special meeting for us to do a working group, basically, for, for the strategic plan.
I think that that would, I would, I'm going to ask that Nancy and David represent the feedback they got from both of their, their, their boards.
Okay.
And then we would have had that time for us to throw that out there. See, by the way, this, this could be a quick meeting or it could be, you know, a long meeting. I don't know. But on that day, we should have the consultants creating the final draft that comes back to us for the 28th. So, it'd need to be posted on the 21st. So, what do you think? What do you guys think? Am I making sense?
Yeah, I think you've got about two to two and a half weeks to have that meeting. If you want them to come back with a, the revised version.
Missouri right there. And I'm out of town here and I leave early there.
Where are you here?
Missouri.
When do you get back from Missouri?
The 20th.
So, I mean, I, I...
I get back the week of the...
I would love to have you there, but you know, in retrospect...
I, I want to be there.
But, but think about this, we're going to give it to you anyway for one more review. So, you know, I, I think that we can't hold it up. I mean, I think we need to keep things moving.
Well, then we could, we could do it, we should do it before I leave.
Okay, so you're leaving when?
I am leaving on the 14th, so...
So, 13th?
If you can do it in the morning, but I don't know about people's schedules. We can check schedules, but, because the Friends will have their meeting on the 12th. And that's, is that a good time for you all to do feedback for that or?
Yes.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, I'm, I'm going to see if we can schedule the meeting for like an extra hour, maybe start an hour earlier.
Perfect.
Because this is going to take much more input than we normally can.
Right. Well, they're always fine on that day. So, I have to go to Indio on the 13th for a grant seminar. I have to be there at 4:00. So... Mm-hmm.
So, 10:00 AM on the 13th?
Yeah, the 13th is a good day in the morning. But I don't know about your schedules. You're, you're...
We can make it work.
Okay. Because we could certainly do that. And I think that would be good.
We'll never pick a meeting where everybody can be there. I think we have to admit that upfront. But if we can at least have the presidents from both board representing the feedback they got, this group, I think it would be great. Now, I have a question for you. Don't, don't give me the evil, I want to ask this question. I bumped into Ellen Vittman in the grocery store the other day. You know, she was part of the original group that pulled all those 70 people together, right? And she said, would there be any way that we could participate in that one last review of it? Because some of us really would love to, to be able to say something. So, could we invite them to that meeting too?
Yes.
I, I bumped into Mike Thompson last night and he was like so apologetic because he just found his email that he had sent to her with his feedback and everyone out of his, his inbox. So, I said, don't worry, you'll have another chance.
Yeah, no, I agree. The, the planning team should be involved in that too.
And we could get as many people as possible.
But once it's posted publicly, anybody can come, right?
That's correct. That's correct.
That's true. Anybody who participated in the retreat could come.
I mean, if anything, maybe we should be thinking about how long a public comment do we want for this?
You mean at the next meeting?
At the meeting where we're inviting the rest of the world to comment about this.
Because we could get...
Well, you may, you're basically going to have to set a time. Do you have a time limit? I mean, we, City Council does two minutes.
Three minutes.
We do, we did three on planning.
So, that means then that if we meet on the 13th at 10:00 AM.
We need a room.
Can we check to see if the learning center is available?
Yeah.
We, we have...
We'll, if it's, we don't have story, worst case, we could use...
I think it'll be okay just that we've had some rentals recently and I just don't know.
We will communicate for sure.
We can find a place, I think, if not. So, please check first. And I would say that the Sotheby's meeting room is pretty large. David might be able to host us there, but we'll find...
What about the Wellwood room?
Yeah.
Well, that's possible too.
Yeah, and parking's free up until noon, so downtown.
So, you guys will help us find a place?
Yeah, that's not...
Easier.
The agenda will be very simple. It's pulling together the presidents of the boards along with our, our board. And we'll invite the original planning group to do one final review with the consultant on the phone of the plan so that we can post it on the 21st for review publicly on the 28th. How's that sound?
Sounds great.
Is that okay with you guys?
Because that would be perfect because then, yeah, we can, we'll do our... Because that will be perfect because then um, yeah, we can, we'll do our board packets before I go on vacation and then uh, we can insert that, like Lisa can insert it and uh, mail them. So, while I'm gone, which we've done before.
So this, this draft strategic plan will be part of the special meeting notice?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes, that's, yes.
So everybody will have a copy of it? The public, all of these interested parties?
Maybe we should make some copies for people who come.
We will, yeah, we could do that. And then um, we can post it on our website with the meeting notice and have it as an attachment.
Oh, that's even better.
So on the twenty-eighth, looking ahead, I think that we do, the, we need to look at the agenda. Jeannie, we might postpone or remove some of the committee reports in order to give us more time for public discussion. Because we could get, we could get some, you know, hopefully the room will be full of people, it'll be kinda nice. For, and at that meeting, we, we will vote to approve the end uh, product to be presented to staff and to the city. So that's, that would be our way of saying, here's what we want you to go forth and do.
We should also invite our two liaisons if they want to attend.
As a matter of fact, I, I could add them to this next distribution. So I'll send it to the president's boards, to uh, to Christie and to Lisa and um, we'll include them and invite them down to the meeting on the thirteenth if they're available.
And your working group?
Yeah, and the working group.
We'll just, no, we just have a start time and then, but uh, hopefully it'll only go ten to twelve.
Yeah, let's, let's try to shoot it for twelve.
I just meant for checking the schedule, that's all.
Oh, sure.
Working group, um, and then the other groups we have there. How's that?
That sounds perfect.
Yeah, I think that's um...
Take care of some business.
It will. Okay. Or is there anything about the plan? We can't discuss it really at this point other than it's, and by the way, I will send you guys an electronic copy. Oh, you got it already, right?
One of the things, uh, we could possibly, the consultant began to mention endless numbers of subcommittees. So I would actually like to have her begin to think through what she thinks we're gonna need.
Okay.
And you're, you're welcome to talk about this now, but um, it might just be better just to save, save your comments until the thirteenth when you can really dig in and...
Well, I mean, the only thing I would say is that, I, I think that the fact that we had such an outpouring of community support at that first meeting, which I thought was an amazing meeting.
We were so grateful.
And since that time, you know, everybody who's been associated with it and beyond has been telling me how exciting this is. And, you know, I think that there's really hope in the community that this is gonna happen now.
We made some really good uh, connections uh, with, with the attendees of the school district and different organizations and we're already building our partnerships. We don't, we don't need a strategic plan, we're doing it.
I haven't heard anybody...
That was pretty amazing, actually, sitting in some of those conference rooms and the breakout rooms and seeing, oh, you guys do that? Oh, we do that too. Let's talk about how we're doing this.
Here's my card.
Yeah, I, and by the way, I've been to communities where this happens, but I haven't, no one has said, oh, we don't need a new library. I mean, people are saying, yeah, it's time for us to do something. So that's, that's why we wanna ride this wave and keep it moving, so, so thank all of you guys. And now, you got, you have your electric copy, you have officially now your printed copy, um, and you'll get yours tonight. Okay.
We...
And we've addressed our new starter ten C point one.
Yes.
Kathy, for the meeting, is that what you were looking for?
Yes.
Good. Okay, so um, if we can, we'll move on to the Measure J discussion, uh, the funds set aside for the library. And you guys may recall at our last meeting, Measure J sent representatives to us and said, we need you guys to respond. We are due to respond back to them in April, is that correct?
Yes, we were gonna put that on our April meeting agenda. And I do have an idea, I have a couple of ideas for that. So uh, the, now, if you all have something else you wanted to, just feel free to talk, you talk first, go ahead.
So I, I, by the way, I'm sorry to go back up one thing, I forgot to mention. The foundation is preparing their annual report to come to us in April as well. So uh, because we, we loaned the money to create the foundation, they uh, like, they make an annual report to us and so it will come to us in April. So just so you know, but, so should this, should this be referred to one of the committees to work with you to come up with how we want to bring forward our request for the March meeting? Is that how, this should work? Or should we discuss it here?
Well, there are two pieces of it. There's some money, there's different pots of money. And some of it is to begin to move forward and some of it is for current improvements.
Now, I can give you a history of the, of the funds, what they were for, if you like. So the, um, there, like you said, there are two pots of money. The hun- there's one hundred twenty-five thousand, two hundred ninety-five dollars. That is set aside for library planning. That is um, for architects. And that could be your visioning money, your, your consultants who help you with that. We, we already have, we've hired, we've already done this. We, so we're gonna do it again. We've hired, uh, we hired consultants and designers and the consultants to help us vision and have community meetings. And we had our focus groups and, and our community nights and um, asked the community what they wanted to see in the library. We did the, the visioning boards and um, so this is the leftover that we had. Because we had, we had done the vision, we had done our plan, our design, our initial design. And we said, great, let's go forward. This was for the renovation five years ago. Great, let's go forward. So they authorized this batch of money to take that and turn those designs into a plan.
Right.
Shovel-ready plan. Um, so that's what that money was set aside for, and so there it sits. And then the four hundred ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred eighty-nine was also for taking it and turning it into the shovel-ready plans. But the estimate we got was a million dollars, right, were you?
Oh, it'll be, it'll be that.
So there were the, the, yes, planning, visioning, designing, and then, yeah, I'm a little fuzzy on that. And then a half a million dollars was for turning those into plans, so. Now, we're starting over essentially. We're, but we're not wasting, we, the money isn't wasted because we, we can take what we learned and still continue forward. So we have to focus on the fact that we're not, we didn't waste the money, so.
How many of, i- is there anyone on the board who was here when you did that?
Were you, you weren't here five years ago, no.
The plans came to us, right?
Right, but Harry wasn't part of the commu- nobody.
No, no.
No. Uh, David Gray, Ron Wilson, Linda Hutter.
Is it possible to sit down with one of you and go over what you have?
Oh, sure, yes.
And to the, to the extent that it's, it's all of us, because I think, uh, I mean, I, I think we still want the money for the same kinds of things. Although it would be great, I, great to have them give you some money to fix your bathrooms.
Right, so...
So that's, that's my...
There are a couple of things we could do with this. We could, except the bathroom, I have to tell you, the bathrooms, it's a can of worms because the pipes throughout the whole park are rusted. So how do you do, the, the pipes are in, in the floor, you gotta dig up the whole floor.
Under the concrete?
Yeah, from the, from that side of the library.
They've been modeled twice.
To the front side of the library. So it's a can of worms. It's a, that, just to do the bathrooms, there's probably, you know, a couple million dollars because of the, because of that, and then make them ADA compliant or to today's standards, because they are ADA compliant, but there are issues.
That was one of the remodels that have been done.
Yeah.
It's been done twice in the last ten years.
So, I would love that, but we talked about, well, we talked about a different renovation where we did, when we, where we moved them to where our administrative offices are. And we create new restrooms that are ADA compliant or um, a family restroom, or a gender-neutral restroom or whatnot. There's the whole restroom complex there. And then you do new pipes and new everything and just kinda treat it like a new building, so that, yes, but, oh, so many things. And then uh, the J.C. Frye building, that's another thing that I, I kind of have an interest in because there's a real opportunity there. Because when I say, where am I gonna put this? J.C. Frye building is an opportunity for us because it's three thousand or four thousand square feet, I forget.
With no bathrooms?
Currently.
Right.
It, but it is a really cute mid-century modern building that could be renovated and brought back to the heyday. You know, the high school administrative building that's down the street, that had, they redid that building, it looks so beautiful. This building is of that era and it, it would look this, it would look very much like that and be a super adorable little Friends bookstore, Friends uh, book sorting area, meeting space, but also maybe an event space for us where we could have uh, an, an annex.
Well, the one other thing, I was thinking about it too, is that it, it could be a good place if you were doing some physical renovations in the, the, in the main library to move things over to it.
And that was a suggestion too.
Make it a flex, flex space.
That was a suggestion too, was that we could make that a temporary library, fix it up, then turn that into a temporary location. And if we stayed on site, then we could move out and just have a tiny branch that would function during the renovation.
You know, one of the things that occurred to me when you were talking about the, the visioning and all that stuff that you did in the past?
Yeah.
Did, do our new consultants have any of that information? They've got all of it. So they've seen all of the past stuff that was looked at?
Yes.
So?
Yes.
And they're kind of incorporating those thoughts as well as everything that was presented to them at the last time?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I, I'm sorry, the hundred twenty-five is what we have in one account, what's the, what's in the other account?
Four ninety-se- I'm sorry, didn't tell you the amount. Four hundred ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred eighty-nine dollars. And I may have been a little fuzzy on what they were designated for. It does say library planning and then library infrastructure phase one.
So roughly about six hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars is what we have, that we need to instruct them on where we want that to go and how it's to be used.
Now, if you wanted to use that for some study rooms, that might be, some of that for a study room. Uh, startup money for the J.C. Frye building.
Did you do an estimate on the J.C. Frye building years ago when you did it?
No, um, no, and it just had some damage recently, some water damage, and so everything's kind of a, it, it has been cleaned up and, but it's in a state of gut. You know, it's, the restrooms have been closed forever since I've been here and, so there are a lot of, a lot of things that need to be done. But it's a, it's a concrete rectangle, so I, I don't know how much it costs.
Would you need extra staffing if that opened?
It, it does depend on what we use it for. We use that if we turn that into a literacy um...
Center.
Center, or what, if we just had it as a meeting space that we rented out, I mean, that just puts the burden on Julie and then uh, then she's booking that room and dealing with checking in people and so it's possible maybe the new administrative secretary could handle the booking of the room and the checking in of the people and walking over and unlocking the door.
I was trying to suggest.
Yeah.
So I, I guess my, my question here is, which of the committees should be charged with at least taking this on and identifying, because we, we did promise them we'd be back to them in April, and it's March tomorrow, so I think, and I'd like for this to come back to us at our next meeting for us to discuss and approve. So should it be the building committee, the budget committee? Should it be a Measure J committee that we, we start? I don't know. What do, what do you?
It's up to you all.
What does the trustees think in terms of looking at this?
Well, there, there are two thoughts. If, if it's money that you want to use to jumpstart the new, the new library, then it should be probably...
It's tough, isn't it?
It's tough, because you, I'd have to, you'd probably have to get, I mean, I could get some estimate, I'm just thinking, you could get some estimates on what a consultant would cost to do. The costing, the looking at the old, the old visions, um, both the visioning and the beginning to cost the couple of different options. I mean, we, we know we're gonna need funds to do that.
Probably looking at a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a consultant.
For that at least. And the rest of it, it would be nice to do some upgrades on the existing lo- you know. But I, I don't know if four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars is enough to... I, I mean, I could see you doing anything from, you know, more modular, I mean, things that you might use later. Modular shelving that you can move from place to place as opposed, I mean, what you have is really old and very fixed.
It is, but it's also very expensive to replace.
Oh, I know.
Millions, probably.
So may, may I ask that we create a Measure J task force instead of a committee? Because then it takes life forever, so this is something kind of a short-term assignment.
An ad hoc?
Yeah, and Kathy, would you, could you chair that for us to start working on what are some of the ideas?
Yep.
That we could identify at our next meeting that we would vote on, that we want to use this money? By the way, is there anything wrong with us if we say, instead of six twenty-two, can we have seven twenty-two? I don't know, I mean, is it, or is that locked in?
No, I don't think, I, I mean, I think we can...
Say, we want one point six, one point seven.
So, and, and I would say, I don't, I don't want you to do this work alone, so, I mean, you've, I'm willing to help. David, would you be willing to, so who do you think would be best? I mean, you're the budget committee. I, I looked, what do you guys think? I mean, to, to help you with this, or do you? We could give it to Harry, he's not here, but I mean... I want you to have some help.
The cost of a refrigerator that's not working.
That's a kind of a good idea. If you had one from the budget and one from the building, then...
And I'm on, I'm on that. So it's, if your time allows, if not, I'm happy to, to support you and you tell me, you tell me what I'm supposed to do and I'll go do it.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
And then we'll, we'll bring you in for the budget committee as needed.
Sure.
Okay?
Oh, who, Kathy and Ed?
Kathy and Ed.
Would you like to make a motion? Do you have to do a motion or do you, no, you're the president, you just appoint it?
I could name, um, and create task force. So we're gonna have a Measure J task force that's gonna be chaired by Kathy. I'll be a member of that. And our, our charge is to identify the uses of that six hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars that is allocated to us so that we can discuss it on the twenty-eighth and vote on that so that we can report back to the Measure J committee on how we want that money to be spent.
Is there someone, one of you, and that I can go to from the library to look at all the materials that you did before?
Mm-hmm. That's probably me, I think. I have, um...
Do you just, uh, to give it to the person who has the least time? Oh, my goodness.
I know, but I have, I've, I have all the files. I can um, put it on a memory stick because I have done, I've sent things to Public Works as a file, so I have a lot of it handy. So I just have to gather it to give to you. But yeah, I can show you too what we have. I dug out the two thousand and five renovation and expansion foam boards. It's not a good plan, you know, it, now, it's fourteen years old.
The value of doing an old plan and having one you don't like is that you know that you don't like it.
Yeah.
And that's really a good thing, to have something that you've worked on.
Yeah.
That you now know wouldn't have worked.
Well, that point can be made about the last round that we made about the renovation. When it came to us, we could have said, but wait a minute, if we're gonna spend eighteen million dollars for a renovation, why wouldn't we take the time to look at what a new building would cost and where we can do it all over and do it the way we want? That, so it was money well, well spent in my mind. I mean, I hate to say that it was a lot of money, but I, it really allowed us to say, this, this really is probably not the most viable option.
So I'll, I'll try and look at this from two alternates. I'll look at it. Partitions is something that we know that we need in terms of space, so try and see what it would cost to get somebody to do space planning with you. And we can look at that and we can also look at the capital campaign, you know, at, at the planning that we need to do on the capital campaign.
I will advise you that any um, thing that you do like that has to go through the city's procurement process and contracting and requests for proposals and bids and all of that.
So everything that you do has to be done through the city, so it means sitting down with Marcus in terms of understanding what his, with you or with Marcus in terms of what his process is, okay?
Once we agree what we wanna do with it, right?
Yeah, so yeah, you, you can't just go out and say, hey, we've got some money, let's go hire somebody. I know, I know, I know a person, you know. You can't do that.
No, but we can, we can work with, there's some really good people the city's worked with in the past who might actually understand the renovation requirements of a historic building as well as looking at something that's uh, new and fits into Palm Springs.
Mm-hmm. And for us, we are always interested in um, experts, architects or whatnot, that are experts at libraries. Because one thing happened, our building is sinking. Guess what's heavy? Books. You know, you gotta think about, if you have multi, you do a multi-store... You know, you gotta think about, if you have multi, you do a multi-story building on sand and it's full of heavy books, there're gonna be a problem. So you have to, uh, people go, oh, oh, I didn't think of that. You know, so there are a lot of things in, in libraries and all of that stuff.
But.
We like library-specific people too.
My guess is the city has no library-specific people.
That is true.
I think that's right.
Although the, well, that's not, that's true.
The last two groups that came before us, they were, one was a local, one was a national firm.
One was the local that did.
They would definitely be available to look at, um, a new project. They, they said that, if you go new, we'd love to have a chance to look at that.
And a lot of architects, they'll do a partnership.
The new was the interactive design who walked away from the old, working in the partnership. I, I know that interactive design, people from interactive design said they'd worked.
That wasn't one of the ones who proposed.
That wasn't one of them.
But a lot of, um, well, it doesn't matter. But a lot of them are, um, will do partnerships. Um, when I was at Palm Desert Library, they did a partnership with a library-specific architect, a library expert, and then they did a local.
Right.
And so then it was beneficial for them.
The national firm, by the way, is a national firm that's worked with libraries. So they were, it was very appealing, but also it, the local firm is a local firm. So it's, you know, anyway.
Yeah.
Okay, so, great. Um, if we can, we'll move to ten E. Uh, Jeannie and I had a conversation in creating the agenda because we want these meetings to, of course, achieve what we're here to do, especially looking ahead. So I suggested to her, I, I don't think it's gonna happen in the next couple of months, but going forward, I can see our committee work becoming a little more intense than it ever has. So we may want to look at a format where one, one month we have this meeting, because I'm, I'm where everyone has lives and has schedules. And the next month is dedicated to committee work so that we're not trying to cram everything into the same month. I bring that up only out of trying to respect everyone's time. If everyone says, no, we're okay, we can, we can keep moving. But I'd like to at least keep out there that if these committees start taking up too much time, I don't want people to feel they've got to rush to do another meeting in a, in a couple of days, so.
Could you clarify your, uh, could you clarify your proposal? And are you talking about two meetings a month for the entire trustees?
One month would be dedicated to all of us coming together like this. The next month would be where our committees come together, do the work they need to do to bring back to the next meeting. Because like we just, we just created a new task force, right? And we know that in the future, the, the building committee's gonna probably start picking up and doing more activities. So instead of doing two meetings a month, let's do one dedicated to a full board meeting and the others are committee work. Does that answer your question?
Yes, so in other words, you're saying that we're gonna have half the number of public meetings?
Correct, correct. But the budget, the committee meetings could, could definitely be open to public as well.
Why don't we take that up when we get to the point that the committees start getting burdened?
Okay.
Because I think that in the interim, we've got a lot of decisions regarding moving forward and the specific plan that the entire group should be part of. We're much, we're really a small board, so not having the agreement of everybody on the board as we move forward, I think would, would be nervous-making.
And I, I do wanna add, your standing committees would be public meetings
Right.
with an agenda and posted, so just letting out that.
So let's, let's agree that we'll table this item until we have a full board. We have our vacancy filled and of course, Harry is here. And we're looking ahead at the workload, I guess is what I should have said, for us in the future. Do we need some more flexibility with our meeting schedule? So I'm quite all right there. I just wanted to be aware that, I know you guys have lives and other commitments. Um, the agenda format, this agenda format actually evolved from wanting the previous boards wanted to make sure that we allocated time for every committee to report if they met. So it is, I wanted to make sure this is okay with this, since you guys are new. Do you appreciate this? Or should we only put the committee reports when we have one? We just didn't wanna leave something off. We wanted to make sure that everyone got a chance to report and we didn't skip someone. Is that okay with you, I, you guys, or, okay?
Why don't, why don't you have, if the committee has reports, they get through to you and let you know so that we don't have to
Sure.
go through reports from committees that don't have reports?
So we'll ask the committee chairs to file reports with, with me when they have one and we'll put it on the agenda as a reporting item. How's that, Jeannie?
Yes, do you need to, does that need to be motioned?
I don't, I don't, that's just an agenda format, right?
Okay, so, so let me just clarify. So if there is a committee report to, so basically it is a change. You don't mind this format, however, you have decided to change it so that if there is a committee report, you would let us know and then we would make sure it's on the agenda?
Right.
But otherwise you would take it off, or is that, no, I'm here.
In some ways, just keep it the way it is and
Okay.
the chair can let you know if they have a report.
And we'll put a note here on the committee.
But people don't need to feel that they have to report if they have a note.
Oh, right, yeah, you could quickly just say, no report, no report.
We can say, report expected, or we'll put some note on the agenda going forward so that people will know in their time allocation that there is a report coming from a committee.
So maybe instead of it saying, report from advocacy committee, it would just say advocacy committee. And if there is no report, it would just, that would be all of it said. But if it's a, if they needed one, it would say advocacy, I can't say advocacy committee hyphen report.
Like.
Or something like that.
So I can, pretty, let's do an example. For example, budget committee.
Yes.
Um, because the budget committee is a standing committee and its meetings should be announced to the public.
Oh, yeah, I didn't do, okay.
Um, that is one reason why we, the budget committee does not have a, a report this month.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
You're right.
Yep. So going forward, we would know that there's been a public meeting of the budget committee and that there will be a report at the next meeting and we'll make that note on here. So, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, thank you.
Good.
And, and by the way, this is our agenda, this is our format. We can evolve this as our workload, because that's what, that was really my point of those two items, so. Um, we just wanted to restate who volunteered for what or who was appointed to what on the committees. Do we have any changes to those? Are they final?
Is this accurate too?
Okay, we do have some vacancy, but we have some vacancies on the board. So I think we're, we're good to say these are our boards for this year, our committees.
Right, okay, okay, as is right now.
Yes. All right, um, and we're into the committee reports section. Um, there, there are, we've, we've actually made reports from some of these, but there's no advocacy committee, right, that didn't meet, there's no meeting. Uh, budget committee, there's no report on that one. Buildings committee hasn't met yet. Policies and bylaws has not met, no need to at this point. Uh, literacy ad hoc did not.
It's vacant.
It's vacant. Uh, strategic plan, we've already spent time on that and the Wellwood. So I think that we've kind of done our reports for this meeting unless anyone has any questions.
And we'll just mark those as no reports because we discussed it in our legislative section.
All right, staff representative.
Now, let me find my report, how funny. Oh my goodness, it got crazy. Now, you'll see in your packet, we do have the new, final approved version of our annual report. Thank you, Julie, for doing all the writing, typesetting, almost all the writing, I wrote it. And printing, it's beautiful. It was approved by, or it was in the city council's receiving file, they did approve that. You'll also see in your packet that we got a donation. So I, um, I tried to give you a copy of the letter so that you, you're aware. And it helps us keep track of our donations in our, in our official record in our packet. Still looking for my report, I know it's in here, it's a mess. Um, so we got a one hundred dollar donation from Alpha Delta Kappa. They are very good at, at donating to us every year. Standby, it's in here, hold on. Yeah, it is still February. I was thinking that was last month. Okay, oh, my goodness. Uh, the, uh, in our youth program, we have our next Drag Queen Story Hour coming up on Tuesday, March fifth at six o'clock. We want you to meet Bella De Ball, our city's social ambassador. And Bella does, we have a craft this time, it is Mardi Gras. So we're going to have, kids can come and make a, make a mask and hear stories and then we'll probably have a parade. And then at the end, we always do a dance party, so. Drag Queen Story Hour teaches acceptance and friendship and kindness. And we encourage everyone of all ages to attend. Our, um, our annual Family Fun Fest is the first Wednesday of Palm Springs Unified School District's spring break. That's on April seventeenth, it's a Wednesday morning from ten to twelve. That will be at the Palm Springs Stadium next door to the library. And we have lots of organizations already confirmed to come. And every one of them has an activity for children, so games or crafts or demonstrations. It's just a fun, quick day. We love to do it. It also helps us get the word out about summer reading because summer reading is just around the corner. Now, um, our new brochure just came out, our spring brochure, and in it you will see some really great programs. We've got a Desert X Lecture on Wednesday, March sixth. Um, our adult programs are usually on Wednesday nights at six thirty. Uh, we had a, oh, we just had a wonderful program. We had the Desert Flippers come, capacity crowd. We are, we really do apologize, we had to turn people away. Um, but the people who did attend, it was a wonderful program. Uh, the Desert Flippers, Eric and Lindsay Bennett came and talked about being on TV and, and working in the desert and doing some fun stuff. So it was a really great pro, program. Now, so I, like I said, we've got the Desert X Lecture on March sixth with Jenny Gil Schmitz. She's the executive director of Desert Exhibition of Art. Uh, the week after that, on March thirteenth, we have Desert Bees, a nature lecture, six thirty. And on March twentieth, another nature lecture. Well, I mean, is this nature or health? I think it's a health lecture, how to survive a snake bite. We hope that no one needs the information we're going to teach you at that lecture. Uh, and then coming up, mark your calendars, the American Documentary Film Festival Sneak Peek happens on March twenty-seventh. We have three screenings of some, like clips, right? No, Julie's gonna tell me, because, yeah.
So it is actually one of the films that will be screened at the documentary festival. Um, I just learned that it is called The Interpreters. Um, and we will be having three showings of that film as a sneak peek prior to the festival. And then at the end of the festival, which will be later, we will do sort of a, a fan favorite selection of films that were shown at that festival.
And are you doing those at the library?
We do.
We do. Uh, the American Documentary Film Festival has worked with us the past few years and donated a digital projector and a nice big screen. And, and Julie usually has a couple snacks or something. So the, the, the sneak peek is at ten thirty, two o'clock or six o'clock, that's also in the brochure. Um, and like Nancy was talking about, the Friends, our Palm Springs Speak Speaker Series, we have Rick Steves coming Sunday, March third at three thirty PM at the Richard Center for the Arts at Palm Springs High School. This is gonna be a really nice talk. He's talking about travel as a political act. And we'll have a slideshow and everyone in attendance gets a copy of his book, Travel as a Political Act. And if they arrive, they're supposed to come today. So, uh, it's gonna be a really wonderful program. We also do have a VIP reception that is available. It starts at two o'clock. His lecture starts at three thirty and he will be signing books afterwards. Um, and it's just gonna be a fun day for him. Tickets are available and it is a fundraiser for the Friends of the Palm Springs Library and the Palm Springs Cultural Center. And like Nancy was saying, the Friends Annual Meeting is March tenth, however, it's sold out. So we encourage you to become a member of the Friends, to find out about all these great programs so that you can get on the list early. Now, something new that we do have that is sponsored by the California State Library is we have added the New York Times Online completely free of charge. Uh, it's the digital version. You just go to our website, palm springs library dot org and click on research and e-learning or watch our scrolling banner and it'll pop up. But, um, New York Times Online, you just click redeem the offer and then it will take you through. And you have to create a username and password. But again, it's all free and then you get the digital version of New York Times on your, your phone, your tablet, your computer. Uh, I checked it out today and it's, that, it's, it is the New York Times. So, um, we're really grateful for that gift and all the libraries in California are eligible for that. Um, and then we're hoping to add, we are, we're going to add some new databases, like I talked about in our budget section. Um, we're working on getting the, um, the contracting going for Canopy movie streaming and then Acorn, which is the BBC streaming. And, um, and then we're working on a children's one called Brain Pop, a children's database, Value Line Investment Survey, um, another genealogy database and a couple of others. Thank you, the small bit, the demographics now for small businesses, that's very helpful. So we're working on those things. And if you have any questions for me or if I forgot anything, I'm happy to answer your questions. And you got some brochures, so check out our, our children's and adult programs. We've got some great stuff going on.
As always.
Thank you.
Anything else from staff?
Uh-uh.
Trustee comments and requests?
I have a request.
Yes?
So last time I was here, oh, last time I was here, I talk so loud anyway. Um, the last time I was here, I, I said that I might want to request that we move the May meeting and it turns out that I do want to request we move to the May meeting to May thirtieth. I think it was the date that we were kind of bouncing around.
Okay. I'm good for that. Can we look at the calendar? So we probably had to move it because we may not be able to be here, is that what normally happens in these?
Let me look. It will probably be fine. It is the fifth Thursday of the month. Now, we would have to check the calendar here, but if not, we would, um, check our calendar at the library and it will probably be fine to do it at the library.
Okay. Do we need to make any kind of motions in there, just ask that we do that?
Well, it's not on the agenda, so, um, as an item, we could, should we just, do we just schedule that?
Can you come back to us next month?
We'll change it in March and put it on the agenda.
On the agenda?
Put it on the agenda, yeah.
And we'll, uh, we'll vote. Especially you come back and tell us that it's available, where it will be.
Yeah, there you go.
We got plenty of time.
But it's probably fine. I mean, if you all are fine with it, it's probably fine. And again, worst case, we could meet at Wellwood. It's, it's trickier in the afternoons because then they start closing down the streets and setting up for the street fair and parking gets busy. But it, it'll be the end of May, it'll be hot.
Yeah, you're right. Thank you, anything else?
I had just gotten a note back from somebody about some of the displays and I was wondering who I shared that with at the library, I didn't.
You could share it with me and Julie or just Julie? Um, Julie is, Julie Warren is our library services and public relations manager and she helps coordinate the exhibits.
Julie, I might not have your email.
Okay.
So, can I give that to you?
Okay, yeah, we can square that up. Yeah, if it's a, if it's an adult exhibit.
It was a children's exhibit.
Okay, well, or maybe, maybe me, or.
I'll, I'll share it. It was, um, somebody who liked the collection but had some concerns about the exhibit.
Okay.
Afro, the Black History Month exhibit.
Okay.
And I didn't wanna be overly critical, but I did wanna share
Yeah, sure, yeah.
the comments with you.
We always are interested in feedback.
Sounds good. Any other comments? All right, good meeting as always, thank you guys. I will stand, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned at four fifty-four on the twenty-eighth of February.